One, like seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. I'd like to welcome you all to the March twentieth, two twenty, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting of the Traverse area district library.
I can't hear you.
What work I have.
Thank you.
Josh, can they hear us now? Let's try it one more time. Welcome. Glad you're all here for this regular meeting of the March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five Traverse area district library board. Everyone here now? Excellent, good. If you will now, if you can, rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There are six seats up here in the front if you'd like to come and sit down. Unless there are any, our first order of business here is the approval of the agenda. Unless there's any objections, I would like to accept, make a motion to accept the agenda and make an amendment so that we can add the letter to our representatives during the new business section. Are there any objections?
So moved with that amendment.
Supported. Thank you. Can I get a vote on that?
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Because Sam Gedman is not here today, we need an acting secretary. Is there anyone willing to volunteer to be secretary? Thank you, Mike. We now have a secretary for this meeting. We'll now have a public comment. I would ask if you are going to make a comment. I believe you have a number for those, so we can do it in an orderly fashion. You can then approach the prodeum, state your name, county you live in, the city and township, and limit your comments to three minutes. And I ask you to just be respectful to all. So if we have first question.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, guys, for your time today. I'm actually the complainant who issued the complaint, and given the turnout and the ticker article, I thought I would go first so that you could hear what I had to say. You would, you know, it might assuage some fears. I'm not here requesting to ban the book. When I initially asked to appeal the decision, I never intended to further ask to, like, fight it. I just wanted a chance to have my concerns be heard and to ask questions. So that's the only reason why I took it to appeal. And just, I'll explain a little bit about, you know, I wrote out some comments so I wouldn't prattle on. So I'm sure you're all aware of why I'm here. I feel I should begin that I actually am not here expecting that the initial request for consideration be appealed, nor am I requesting that it be. I wanted to speak with you all simply because I had further questions for going forward and wanted to have an opportunity to share my concerns and have them considered for when it comes time to make book selections in the future. I also thought, given my specific background, more on that later, I'd be a reasonable voice in the conversation. I completely understand the library's reasons for their decision. I'm not happy that the specific imagery I'm contesting, also more on that later, is still available for little kids to see, but I am acutely aware of the dangerous precedent it sets to pull books off shelves entirely. As I stated in my initial request, quote, "I'm not calling for the banning of this book. All I'm hoping to achieve is that this book does not innocently fall into the hands of incredibly young children whose sexuality is not yet online, so to speak, and whereby such exposure is confusing and less benignly outright damaging." I then inquired as to the possibility of placing this book on a requests-only section, where it would remain in the catalog and would not be outright banned, seeing as I'm not really a fan of banning books under really any circumstance. But first, given that this appeal request was discussed in the ticker, I feel some clarity and nuance on my part is required. As I also stated in my initial request, I'm not contesting any other image or concept throughout the book Granddad's Pride. Rather, I contested and still am a very specific image on page six of the book. The image in reference depicts two adults engaged in a demonstrably sensual embrace, going in with open mouths to kiss one another. Moreover, and I would argue more significantly, the one man in the fore is wearing a BDSM, that's bondage, discipline, sadism, masochism, kink outfit. There's literally no misconstruing what type of outfit this is. If you Google BDSM kink wear, this type of outfit shows up immediately. I brought a picture, so he's wearing leather underwear, no shirt. The other guy's fine, but he's wearing leather underwear, straps, that's it. And I don't know how to explain this to my five and six-year-old. So, as I also stated in my initial request, I do not care whatsoever about the engagement of consenting adults in sexual kink culture. Excuse me, but that's your three minutes. Can I go? I have to read my whole statement. It's really imperative. I have to. It's really imperative, I promise. It's really imperative.
But three more minutes.
Okay, I will be quick. I'll be quick. So, as I said in this initial request, I do not care whatsoever about the engagement of consenting adults in sex kink culture. Why should I care? But I do care if it seems our depictions are in books intended for preschoolers. Many times in this very same library, I've come across pride books or stories that depict families with two moms, two dads, divorced parents. These families absolutely should be depicted in our children's literature. Children who come from these families absolutely should see their family life reflected in the general selection of children's literature. Further, for clarification, and adamantly refute impressions that this request comes from a place of bigotry, I myself am bisexual. I have been out to my friends and family since high school. I have marched, I march for marriage equality. I've attended pride parades. Some of my closest friends, past and present, identify under the broad umbrella of LGBTQ+ that has nothing to do with bigotry or homophobia. I can say in my heart of hearts I would be giving the same spiel if it were a man and women, man and woman, excuse me, wearing that outfit in a book intended for preschoolers or K-2. This has only ever been about contesting the display of sexual imagery and allusion to sexual fetish culture to minors unable to consent, sorry, unable to consent and unable to exercise critical judgment or select the good and reject the bad. This is not NYA literature but intended for preschoolers. I'll skip a few so I don't go over this much. I'm not asking for a ban. The book is here. Banning is a dangerous precedent. I have no problems with anything else in the book. I'm not contesting that. I just was shocked when I opened it up. There are tons of other pride books I've come across that I said, oh, yeah, they have two moms, two dads, that's love is love. I can explain that. I just didn't know how to explain that to my kids when they're wearing BDSM fetish wear in an outfit. So, my questions are, I'm not trying to ban a book. I get it, it's dangerous. I'm not a fan. I'm a free speech absolutist. My questions are, going forward, and this was all the intent of my appeal, was with respect to future book selections within youth services, I would like to know, is there a line that would be too far for selection consideration? In other words, what content, if not this sexually suggestive imagery, would be considered inappropriate for procurement in youth services? Secondly, and this is more for my own edification, if I'm being honest, is there any situation where a request for reconsideration would be granted? Has it ever been granted? And if not, what is the point of that particular procedure? Again, I respect the decision of the library staff. I truly understand where it's coming from. Banning books is dangerous. The fact that my request was depicted in the local news as some frothing book banning tirade is quite disingenuous. I come here today as an incredibly frequent patron and as a mom to ask the above questions and simply add my concerns and considerations for the types of books I would and would not like to see at my local library, specifically for my very young kids. I sincerely thank you for your time and for your respectful consideration.
Thank you.
Can you say your name, please?
Can I not? I would prefer not to because I would prefer not to be dragged by people.
Next is number one. And if you want to line up in order of numbers, you can go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Andy Shirk. I'm head of the youth services department here at the Maine library, and I live in Traverse City, along Lake Township. I'd like to read a letter that we wrote from the youth services department. I am tall. I'll lean over. How's that? I would like to read a letter that was written on behalf of the youth services department. We, the staff of the youth services department at Tattle's Maine library, would like to add our support to keeping books like Granddad's Pride by Harry Woodgate on the shelves of our library and not behind a desk. Moving books with offensive to some comment, content would lessen access for important carrying books, which are mirrors or reflections of community members and their lives, and windows of looking to these community members for outsiders. These books are meant to reside on shelves for community members to find them. If we moved one book that had offensive to some comment, content, excuse me, we'd end up having to move a lot more because other community members would have other things that they are offended by, and that's not how a free public space, such as the library, which is open and welcome to all community members, works. Parents are the final decision makers in their children's reading content, determining if the pictures or content in a particular book are engaging or offensive or something in between to them. If material offensive to the family is found, there are many other options to choose from. Over seventy-two thousand books, children's books in our district, plus the Michigan E-Library, plus eBooks, our staff are happy to help you find books that are right, the right fit for your family. In addition, the books on our shelves are selected carefully by trained librarians and staff members. There are several factors which go into helping us determine if the book is a good fit for our collection. Have we purchased other books by the same author? In this case, yes. How well did they circulate in our community? Well, at the time, Granddad's Camper by Woodgate had circulated thirty-one times in three years. Is the book garnering interest in our region? Yes, forty-five other libraries in the state of Michigan currently have Granddad's Pride on their shelves, according to the Michigan E-Library. Was the book well reviewed by one or more professional book reviewers? Glowing reviews from Kirkus Reviews and Publishers Weekly in two thousand twenty-three say a resounding yes. Are there local interest factors that suggest this book would be a good fit for our community? Yes, there is a strong pride community in Traverse City, and many pride members are supportive library users. To conclude, we, the staff of the youth services department, believe that no book should be moved because of its content to a private shelf away from the free public space of the library. Thank you.
If you can move both, applause, we appreciate it. We want to keep it so that everybody can speak. We don't need applause, though. Thank you.
I saw your jokes, but the loudness of you all is much lower volume than here, and my captions don't even come up. I'm not thinking it will deafen the audience to make it a little louder. If it is, there will be.
We'll see what we can do about improving that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, my name is Amy Monet. I'm the manager of the Kingsley Branch Library, so I'm a really proud staff member of Traverse area district library. And I'm not going to reiterate what Andy just said. He said it beautifully and succinctly. But I just want to express my appreciation that we all have these First Amendment rights, that we get a chance to exercise them as a group and as a whole. It's really exciting to see democracy in action, and public libraries are the last bastion of democracy. We really take our jobs very seriously, and part of our job is making everyone feel like they're a part of that community. When we choose and select our materials, we're keeping in mind the whole of the people, and we understand that that's not a burden, that's a joyous thing that we get to do every day. Thank you for making this happen, for bringing these people together to talk about this very important issue, and I look forward to seeing what you all decide, but thank you.
Thank you.
Give me a second to turn off my captioning and turn on. By the way, is this the right angle?
We can hear you well.
Okay, sometimes it's not at the right angle. I'll ask everybody to check that when they come up here. Sorry to be the gadfly, but hopefully it helps other people also. Trying to turn off my captioning, which is not happening, but that's okay. First of all, I'd like to say that, okay, in nineteen eighty-seven or eighty-eight, I censored my nephew's books, and he was pissed. I didn't like all the he, he pronouns. I didn't know about they, but I changed it to he, she. So sometimes people don't like, people want things just the way they are, and he wasn't being sexist. And I think there's something to be learned from his response to that. So we leave the book on the library shelves and we let it be, and it's not going to stand out, and four-year-olds are not going to look up on internet, even if they, even if older kids did, it's okay. But anyway, I just want to say that. Also, when my mother came here, sorry, some of you have heard this spiel, in nineteen thirty-eight, from Munich, Nazi Germany, her liberal relative said, "This is the United States, and we don't discriminate against Negroes and the Irish." And she came, she wrote later, she knew that wasn't true, but in any case, she would be so freaked out right now. Okay, back to the present. I want to say that I happen to disagree a little bit with the first speaker, maybe more than a little bit, but, I mean, if it were heterosexual, I don't believe it would have caught anyone's attention. It was, everything is context, context, context. The context of this issue right now with book bans since the Biden administration or before that is something that concerns me deeply, and that's the part I wrote down. I'm concerned about free speech and free thought. I'm concerned about control authoritarian, paternalistic, and hateful. I'm also concerned about letting people choose themselves, families, parents, children. I'm concerned about the message this gives to anyone who is different, anyone who is other, and it did not fit the so-called norm. I also am concerned that people might think they have to give up this seemingly small human right of this book not being left in the shelves in order to keep federal funding, mistakenly with the idea that they'll hold at bay that Nazi saluting unelected.
Thank you.
Guy as well as some elected folks in Washington.
Thank you.
My three minutes are up?
They are.
Okay, I'll end there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Bauer. I'm a grandma, and a mom of two kids who grew up in Traverse City, used the library extensively. Now I have three grandchildren who are using the library extensively, and my concern with what the first speaker had to say was, as a grandparent and as a parent, when we brought books home from the library, I was very engaged with my kids, especially at kindergarten and preschool and, I mean, heck, until they were, you know, seniors in high school, I was involved with what they were reading. And if, if we were reading a book and something struck them differently, it was my responsibility to process that with them and filter that with them, and I'm pretty darn sure that none of my kids or grandkids would have looked at that man's outfit and said, "Ooh, that's kinky." They wouldn't even, what is even this BMD? I mean, I'm a fairly educated person, but I would not know that, and I certainly, if I saw it and I knew it, I wouldn't give that information to my grandkids. We would talk about how funny it was. Wouldn't that be uncomfortable? You know, you've seen mommy and daddy kiss passionately before. Hopefully, they've seen that. And so that, to me, is a parent's responsibility. If you don't like the book, then don't bring it home. Or if you like the book when you get it home, put it away. Or if you like the book but you don't like that one picture, flip that page. There are lots of resources that parents have, if they're involved, where they can help their children learn. I can't remember where, I just recently, maybe it was something the library set out, that we learn empathy by reading, and we certainly need a more empathic world right now. And if having a book like this on the shelf, and it has to be on the shelf, it has to be on the shelf, because who would have known that the book was behind the shelf? Unless you live in a very, very small little niche, you're not going to know that information. So I think that it does need to be on the shelf, and you don't know what's going to be triggered by that. It could lead to a miraculous, you know, transformation. And the thing, the one thing that I was also thinking was, my son, I want to hurry, read a lot of Animorph books when he was a kid. He probably imagined himself an Animorph a lot. If you don't know, that's a book where kids turn into characters, like animals, Animorph. And, but as an adult, he doesn't dream of being an animal. That was something that he experienced and he moved on from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please. We're going to hold applause for everyone. Appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Jody Simpson. Can you, you hear me okay? No? Okay. My name is Jody Simpson, and I live in Traverse City. And I am reading a, a letter on behalf of Durendra LeFevre, who couldn't be here today. She's a certified recreational therapist and disability inclusion specialist. I want to thank the Traverse area district library for your work in keeping our libraries safe and enriching for all our children. I believe in the freedom to read, but today that freedom is in danger. Book bans overwhelmingly target books about race, racism, gender, and sexuality, many of these books by Black and LGBTQ authors. Although a minority of voices are loudly challenging books, an overwhelming majority of Americans oppose book banning or book restrictions. I don't want other people making choices for my child. One parent or group of parents should not decide what other people's kids can read. Any restriction or removal of books from our public libraries would undermine the right of every other parent in our community to make a choice about what's right for their child. I read Granddad's Pride and saw in it lessons of mercy, justice, community, care, and love. As a professional who works alongside the disabled community, I see their inclusion in this story as well. This is an attempt to silence the voices of the LGBTQ+ community, and in doing so, it also silences the lived experience of people with disabilities in our community. Audre Lorde brilliantly said, "There's no such thing as a single-issue struggle, because we do not leave single-issue lives." Children deserve the chance to understand their world and everyone in it. Limiting young people's access to books does not protect them from life's complex and challenging issues. Public libraries should be spaces where all children feel they belong. Removing and banning books from public libraries is a slippery slope to government censorship and the erosion of our country's commitment to freedom of expression. I want to thank the librarians in our community who have worked hard to find books that will enrich our children's lives. Please let them do their jobs and leave decisions on books to the experts. Sincerely, Durendra LeFevre.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, so my name is Bronwyn Murphy. I am from Traverse City, and I wrote a quick letter. So book bans have always stood on the side of history with the oppressor, a quick scapegoat for those with too much power to point to as examples of failings in our society. They require no need for evidence, no statistics or examples for support, but only fear and hatred. They remove our constitutional right to the freedom of speech and rely on the spread of conspiracy to thrive. And it takes the very bravest of those in our society to stand up against them. We have already lost so much knowledge and art to hatred and bigotry. We have been the victims of the purge of science, compassion, and history at the hands of those who hide behind a false morality. We have witnessed that come, we have witnessed what comes after book bans are no longer enough to sustain that hate-fueled fire. Banning one book will not stop anyone from getting access to the words or images within. We live in a world where children have near constant access to the internet, the same world where queer couple can hold hands on the street or kiss to express their love. There is nothing inherently immoral about that love. And should love offend anyone with such intensity that they feel they have earned the right to oppress others, history will prove them wrong in the end. A book ban will not erase us. We have always existed, and we always will. And additionally, leather is not BDSM.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Dave Potbill, and I am resident of Williamsburg in Grand Traverse County. I'm here first to voice my support for the Institute of Museum and Library Services, IMLS, of which my family and I have been of benefit hundreds of times over the last decade, including in the completion of my doctoral dissertation in education, and most recently as means of reeducating myself on how our nation's founders were dedicated to an American pursuit of happiness. I understand that this agency was identified as being shut down last Friday. I understand that approximately fifty Tattle patrons use Melcat, which is an IMLS-funded service every day to request materials from around the state of Michigan. I am regularly one of these patrons. I request that the Board of Trustees communicate the importance of IMLS and its continued federal government funding, as the funds that stem from this governmental agency support so many vital and important services in our Traverse City regional library community. In addition, I want to voice my agreement with the library director, Michelle Howard, who shared the following recently regarding censorship of library materials. Tattle intentionally offers a wide variety of materials, knowing that not everyone is going to read everything, with some patrons disliking or disproving materials that others find valuable or useful. We respect a parent's right to choose what their children read, but they can choose, they can't choose, but they can't choose what somebody else's children read. I thank the Board of Trustees for taking my thoughts into consideration today, and I ask that you vote to keep all library resources on the shelves that reflect the diversity within our amazing community.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Margaret Goman, and I'm here representing the League of Women Voters of Grand Traverse area. Can you all? Can you all hear me without me? Okay. The League of Women Voters of Michigan has long been an advocate for private libraries, public libraries, believing the freedom to read and access written materials is a cornerstone of a free and democratic society. The Michigan League states in its positions that, first, public libraries should support our First Amendment right to intellectual freedom and expression by playing an important role in facilitating free and open access to information. Individuals should be trusted to make their own decisions about what they read and believe. Removing and banning books from public libraries is a slippery slope to governmental censorship and the erosion of our country's commitment to freedom of expression. Finally, library staff operating within the standards of the American Library Association should make professional decisions about selection, organization, preservation, and dissemination of resources, services, and technologies without political interference. The local league also espouses the belief that public libraries should be free from censorship. Anytime a private individual attempts to challenge the access to a particular text or the placement of that text by the professional library staff, the league urges the library board to support the freedom of the community, to continue to have free and open access to all materials. We in Michigan are a diverse community in multiple ways. This diversity is part of the richness of our society and certainly means that different people will make different decisions about how to guide their children. While we believe firmly that it is the right and responsibility of parents to govern the growth of their children, it is the very antithesis of freedom when anyone attempts to restrict the freedoms of others. We urge the board to continue to stand firm in fighting any form of censorship and in protecting the rights of our free society to have access to any and all materials contained in the Traverse Area District Libraries. Thank you for the excellent work you have done in providing quality materials for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Baird, and I happen to be from Elk Rapids, Michigan, but I'm here to support libraries. And I just want to thank you for the, giving people the opportunity to speak. And I would just, everyone before me really nailed it as far as what I would like to say. And I am just, again, like the previous speaker, let the staff use their ability to choose books. And as a parent, I would, there were things that I might not have liked my daughter to see or read, but I would have explained it. And actually, I went back to page six, and I missed it twice. But I thought, I, I'm looking at it, and something that looks like that, or I, I wouldn't think my daughter would know what leather was. But again, there are ways to explain without going into detail or, as a suggestion, move the page. So thank you for all your work, and please let people who do not want to read certain things, or their children to read them, they do have the opportunity to not have them do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Hesden. I'm also from Elk Rapids. I, I've been a library cardholder my whole life, though, here in Traverse, and I raise my kids, bringing them to Storytime here. They're in their late twenties now. They're both trans, by the way, and gay. And I got to tell you, I didn't see the leather person either in the parade, you know, in the picture. But I, now that I see it, it actually makes me happy. It makes me think of pride parades and the joyful self-expression of everyone. People express themselves different ways, and that is what we need to teach our kids, if that's what we want to teach our kids, which is something I wanted to teach my kids. And so I would have loved to have this book when they were small. It was a pleasure to read it now, because this issue came up. And I would break my heart for it to go away, because we all got to be up there on the page, you know? And if I saw that picture, it never looked sexual to me. I'm sorry. It was a kiss, and people were dressed up, but it didn't look like sex to me. And I wouldn't feel the need to explain it as sexual content at any level. So, you know, it looked like joy and self-expression. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was twelve, by the way.
Do you have the next person? In, here we go. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sue Jennings. I'm from Lake Anne, Benzie County. Thank you for this opportunity to, to share my opinions. Public libraries exist to provide access to a wide range of materials that reflect the varied interests and needs of the community. Libraries are places where individuals can explore different ideas, engage with diverse perspectives, and learn about the world. Removing or relocating materials because of personal objections would undermine the library's mission to foster free inquiry and intellectual exploration. Further, of course, the First Amendment guarantees the right to access of information and ideas. As trustees, it would seem it is your responsibility to protect that right and ensure that the library remains a resource for all members of our community, regardless of differing personal beliefs or opinions. Thus, I hope this library will maintain a commitment to ensuring the library remains a space for free inquiry, openness, and access to information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Redman. I should probably tell everyone upfront that I am a retired librarian from a 14-library system downstate around the Lansing area, where I was responsible for the first 20 years for a library that was literally 12-foot by 24-foot. Lots of interaction with patrons. And then, and then later-
Stay close to that microphone. We want to hear your words.
Sorry? Do I need to start over? Okay. I project pretty well. And, and then later, I did selection for the 14 libraries. I mentioned the size of the library because when I was doing selection and running that branch, I'll tell you, I got great feedback. You know, the people were right there. I want to thank Tattle for running such a great system. I, I looked at it before I moved up here. I wouldn't have ended up here. I would like to applaud parents who are able to share their children's reading time despite their packed schedules. I'm sure I am not the only one who has read myself to sleep and had a toddler say, "Mom, you can get up now." It's such a joy to watch the world open up to them through reading books. One of the things I did in that small library, it was in the time period when we started introducing videos as part of our collection, and that was such an interesting contrast to having just books, because people had, people might object to things in books that they never would in videos. And, and it became very clear how differently people felt about different things. For example, violence in movies for children, like a lot of cartoons, as you know, are very violent. Some parents objected strongly to that. Some parents were all about it. You know, it was just roughhousing. It was like the, the Three Stooges. There's, as an actual practice, sequestering is a problem for me because it's not how people choose books. Discovery, especially for small children, is an important part of picking books. It's why oftentimes, we try to, to face the books cover forward, because that's how they will choose the book. I, I would like every parent to feel that they can make the choices that shape their children. I just want you to let me have the same rights. Please support your library board. And right now, so far, you're making my library's heart hap, very happy.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Para. I live in East Bay Township, and I am one of the priests to Grace Episcopal Church. I'm going to try to say something that isn't identical to what's been said before. And what I'd offer first is I sympathize with the fact that it's very hard to be a parent. And I can understand how someone could find themselves wanting to discuss this kind of topic with you. At the same time, when my kid was baptized, I promised that I would help him to seek and serve God in all persons, to love his neighbor as himself, and to strive for justice and peace among all people and respect the dignity of every human being. And this library helps me do that by having a wide and diverse and uncontrollable, on my behalf, array of things that my child can encounter. I only have 18 years to get him to where hopefully he can do those things. And at seven, he's already figured out I'm wrong most of the time. And so I want to thank you for, for this. And I also want to honor that these questions are hard. This one is not super easy. But why do these people kiss each other? They love each other. Why are they wearing costumes? And in this particular case, the book actually gives you an answer. They make themselves costumes at the end of the book. But these are not the hardest questions I've had to encounter. The Littlest Marcher made my child ask me, "Why are these police beating these black children and putting them in jail for using the wrong faucet?" A Fish for Jimmy made my child ask me, "Why were these Japanese-Americans put in camps and not given enough food to eat or shelter to have?" If my kid's going to be the kid I want him to be, he's going to need to be exposed to these pieces. And I'm going to need to be exposed to answering hard questions. And so, much like the book teaches us, if we feel that something is not being understood or someone we love is not being celebrated, the answer isn't to be angry or to, to rage, but instead to celebrate. And so I'm here to celebrate this library for exposing my kid to all kinds of crap that I have no control over, but am forced as a parent to respond to, so he can understand how to live in this hard, broken, beautiful, healing world. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a tough act to follow.
My name's Roberta Wosuleski. I'm a 30-year resident of the community, currently living in Williamsburg Acme Town- currently living in Williamsburg Acme Township. I am also a great-grandperson and a grandperson to three granddaughters and one great-grandson. To suggest that I identify closely with grandpa in the book is an understatement. There is no greater joy in my mind than sharing the stories with my kiddos. I learn from them, and they learn from me. It's a perfect relationship. I read the book in question. What I experienced was a tale of reminiscence of someone much like me, and a tale of motivation and creativity on the part of Millie, much like my grands and my greats. It's a lovely story, much like the others in the series. The book is aimed at the 3-plus-age group. When we sit to read, the book itself is almost secondary. What is most important is a moment to bond. Questioning and illustration in the text appears to me to be an attempt to negate the point the author is trying to make. There is room for everyone in this world, and everyone deserves to be respected and celebrated. So I don't think the problem is with the book itself, but rather with the individual's interaction with the book. When my kiddos and I interact with a book, sometimes we read, sometimes we just look at the pictures, sometimes we talk about the shapes and colors, and sometimes we end up falling asleep. If someone takes exception to an image or a word, my recommendation is to skip over it, turn the page, or answer the question in an age-appropriate manner. But don't place a restriction on the book itself, or any other book for that matter. Books are tools to unlock the imagination and the soul. It should never be restricted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we know who's next.
Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Hefner. I live within walking distance from the library and was, came many times with my son, as well as many of you have. I'm actually a teacher. I would like to speak a little bit about that. I'm going to, I emailed this morning, so I'm just going to read, read my email that I did. I would like to comment about the book Grandfather's, Grandpa's Pride. As I'm sure you all know, representation through children's literature is a powerful tool to encourage dialogue and understanding in children, especially if done in the home. As a teacher, I can personally attest to this power. I can also attest to the general power of reading, especially reading all types of literature to children. Reading books is fun. Removing this book even to behind the desk, as I'm sure you are well aware, is a slippery slope. I would think that people will start to scour the children's library stacks, looking for others to remove. For example, in my own classroom this week, I read Wacky Wednesday, a Dr. Seuss book. There is a bare bottom in the story. I'm sorry if that would offend someone, but my children love the story. It's never been a question as to why that's there. I also read around Valentine's Day, Froggy's First Kiss, also a book that the children love. I implore you to leave Grandpa's Pride on the shelf where it belongs with other rich representational literature for all to read.
Thank you. The next person? What number are we on? Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Just go on.
There you go. Thank you.
I'll jump in, forty-four, right?
Yeah.
And I know what you're thinking, a middle-aged white guy. Which way is this going to go?
My name is Mike Naughton, Traverse City. I am the chairperson of the ACLU of Michigan Northwest Lawyers Committee. I also serve in the board of directors of the ACLU of Michigan.
Mike, can you lean a little bit closer?
And I'm going to lean a little closer?
Yes.
Nice to see you. Hi, everybody. We wrote a letter. You've received the letter. I'm not going to go through painful detail about that. One thing I do want to point out to us in Traverse City is we have a special responsibility. We're the capital of northern Michigan. What happens here in our communities, what happens here in our libraries, is important. Not just for us, those of us that live here, but across this area. We've heard people from Lake Anne, Benzie Township, someone in Elk Rapids. And so standing up, participating, speaking, and being part of the discourse couldn't have been more important today and going forward in the future. So, again, nice to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Abigail Frost. I live in Traverse City. I am here on behalf of my mother, who is not able to be here. I am an older sister to three young children under the age of 10. When this issue came up, my mother, who is working on her PhD, took her phone, showed the image to my younger siblings. They shrugged and continued running amok amongst the house. There are so many children's books that are, have parents kissing, or have families at the beach, and there's people in bikinis. There's, leather at Pride is a longstanding tradition, and it should not be taken behind the shelf, because you cannot take just the one page with just the one illustration behind the shelf. You take the entire book, and that puts that entire book behind that restriction, behind that shelf. It means it's one step harder to ask for it, and that means it's one step more likely to be ignored and to not be taken out and checked out. And that means that it is that much more likely to just not be seen. And I believe, as a queer woman myself, that it is important that children know about the history of gay people and pride, and that it is not something shameful to have a fun outfit to go out in. And if that is a struggle to explain, then you can explain it the same way that my mother tells my younger siblings, that they cannot have a sip of their wine, because it is a grown-up drink, and those are grown-up outfits. And if they want to know more, they can know more when they're older. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thanks, members of the board, for your time and everything you do here at the library. My name is Abby Cherry, and I work at Equality Michigan Action Network, Michigan statewide advocacy organization representing the LGBTQ+ community. Today, though, I'm simply here as someone who believes in freedom. Today, though, I'm simply here as someone who believes in freedom, freedom of thought, the freedom of speech, and the freedom of choice. This challenge is not just about Grandad's pride. It's about whether we, as a community, respect the fundamental right of individuals and families to make their own decisions. If this board starts removing books based on personal discomfort or misinterpretation, you will not be banning just one book. You will be opening the door to a widespread censorship, where a small group dictates what everyone else is allowed to read, learn, and think. This is not about protecting children. This is about controlling them. It is about stripping away the free will of parents who do want to see diverse families. It's about denying young people the opportunity to explore different perspectives, make their own choices, and grow into critical thinkers. This is not the role of a public library. Libraries are one of the last truly free spaces in our society. They are the place where people of all backgrounds can discover stories that reflect their lives or open their eyes to experiences different from their own. But more than anything, libraries are for kids, for the child who feels different, for the teen searching for understanding, for the young mind learning that the world is vast and filled with possibilities. Books provide not just knowledge, but comfort, representation, and hope. When you take away those stories, you take away those possibilities. Let's also be clear, LGBTQ+ representation is not dangerous. Love is not dangerous, but censorship is. The idea that a single illustration in a book will somehow lead a children down a so-called dangerous path is not only absurd, it is rooted in the same fear-mongering tactics that have been used for generations to silence marginalized communities. If you allow this challenge to succeed, you're sending a message that fear outweighs facts, that personal opinion overrides public access, and that only certain stories deserve to be told. That is not how a free society works. In a free society, we trust individuals to decide for themselves. I urge you to reject this challenge, not just for the LGBTQ+ community, but for everyone who believes in the power of free thought and free will, and stand firm on your decision, keep it on the shelves, defend intellectual freedom, and send a clear message that Traverse City does not bow down to censorship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just go.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Kathleen Norman, and I reside in Acme Township. I'm a historian and a disabled, non-binary, queer, homeschooling parent to one now adult son and an eleven-year-old daughter. We make heavy use of the library. I became a historian in part to recover history and stories of those like myself who had been deliberately erased. I am grateful for and proud of our fantastic, diverse library collection and amazing staff. I lived for many years in a location that didn't have those wonderful things. And throughout the years, my family has benefited from both the professional expertise and the genuine warmth and kindness of Andy, Kate, Michelle, and many others. I offered my kids a wide variety of books, so they could both see themselves reflected and step into the lives of those who are different from them in human communities and cultures around the world, past and present. As a unitarian universalist family, one of our core principles is the inherent worth and dignity of every person. And three of our core values are justice, equity, and pluralism grounded in love. As was mentioned earlier, the joy of discovery, of finding stuff on the shelves that you didn't know was there, has been a huge part of our family's multiple trips to the library every week. Removing or locating books deemed defensive by some from the shelves creates barriers for my family and other communities, members' free access to library materials that provide those very important mirrors, doors, and windows. Individuals should be trusted to make their own decisions about reading material. No book is going to appeal to every reader. So there's no question that the book Grandpa's Pride is award-winning, highly regarded, and the illustration in question is both sensitively done and representative of real pride and celebrations which children do attend. And as was said earlier, no preschooler is going to attach the label of BDSM to that particular illustration on their own. Don't want to tell your kids about it? Don't. There is a clear, simple, and easy age-appropriate answer to a child's question about the image. As was said earlier, just tell them children like to dress up for pride. And if they continue asking, tell them it's something that they can talk about as adults. But in the end, this reality check is less significant than the fact that someone's personal choice to avoid reading a given book or to allow their children to read that book never constitutes a sufficient reason to take that book away from the community.
Hi, I'm Sheri Wilson, and I live in Traverse City, Garfield Township. And I just wanted to say that I've traveled quite a bit for work, and I always go to the library in the town that I visit. And this library is the best I have experienced. It's a community center. It's a place that does so much, and I really applaud the work that you do. My father-in-law spent decades out at a little kiosk in the café volunteering. What I want to say is that, first of all, you've just increased the number of checkouts for this book tremendously. I haven't read it, but I can say that, having grown up in a pretty strict religious family, very loving, that when something came up, that my parents, well, I'll just tell you, a seven-year-old said, "What's a nudist colony? I don't know where I got that information," but my parents' response made me want to know what it was real bad. I haven't been yet, but the day will come. Anyway, my point is that I think that it's our reaction to the books, more than the images in the books that have an impact on children. And so I hope that you will not ban any books. I think banning books around the country has been very, very concerning. And I think, on the flip side, if there's a silver lining, one way to get kids to read is to ban a book, because when they can get on the internet and find that list, you bet they're gonna read the books. So it's really pointless. Anyway, I think that's what I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amy Hartsoff, Long Lake Township, here in Traverse City. Just don't have any prepared remarks, but growing up as another, I would say it's great to have read this book, and it made me feel accepted. And like, it was just, it was very uplifting, lovely story. I was looking for the bad parts, you know, the bad parts. And I'm sorry, I don't mean that in any disrespectful way, because everybody has their own opinions, but I was kind of just surprised. And I've read commentary online and understand some of the concerns, but I think there was a grandma who said it best. And I mean, it's been repeated, just there are ways to explain it. So I encourage you to please support the book, support reading, support exploration, and support everybody. This is a great community, and so thank you, tattle for all you do.
Thank you.
Thirty-two, it's me. Anyone? Okay, go for it. Sorry. Thanks. Hi, I'm Joelle Hannert. I'm the Technical Services Coordinator at NMC Library. So in that role, you can't hear me, okay. I work at NMC Library. I'm the Technical Services Coordinator. In that role, one of my responsibilities is to facilitate collection development activities, which includes things like training new staff and how to do collection development, helping to write and maintain our policies. And I'm also responsible for managing several areas of the collection, including children's literature. So I just wanted to speak today, because I think I'm in a good position to share a professional opinion, which happily is probably kind of redundant, but I'll say my stuff anyway. So I read Andy's statement and then heard him read it as well about Grandad's Pride. Just want to affirm that the youth librarian's rationale is totally in line with best practices for how libraries build their collections by looking at things like, is the book well reviewed? Has it been nominated for any awards? Are the other authors' books popular in the library? Do libraries of similar size and scope own the book? And is it a topic of value to some, maybe not all, but some people in the community? So Grandad's Pride clearly fits all of these criteria. Things that shouldn't be considered when making collection decisions are things like, would board members or administrators like the book? Do I personally like the book? Would the book offend anyone in our community? If libraries were to allow such questions to guide our decision-making, it would severely limit our ability to build useful collections. I'm also speaking today as a patron of the library and as a parent. I bring my kiddo into the library at least a few times per month, and most of the books we check out, we find by browsing the shelves. So if some of the books were to be placed behind the desk, that would effectively make them inaccessible to us and others who use the library in this way. Again and again, I hear people, you know, say that it's not censorship to still have the book, but just move it. The ALA, the American Library Association, is clear in saying that limiting access is censorship. So if the library still has it, but access is limited, that's censorship. The experience of looking through a shelf of books with my kid, discovering some that we don't like, but others that we love, is such a wonderful experience, and I'm so grateful to our youth librarians for curating that experience for all of us. To remove some books from the shelf and sequester them behind a desk would compromise that experience, and it sets a troubling precedent of censorship in our community.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ross Hammersley. I live in Traverse City, just across the lake and up the hill. I'm a parent of two queer kids, and I just want to support most of everything that everyone has said, appreciate the board's consideration of this matter. I know it's probably difficult to make such an appeal in the context that you made it, and I appreciate the board's willingness to at least hear it through. I think you've seen a lot of community support to keep the book on the shelf, and I'm simply adding my voice to that chorus, to implore you to maintain what I think is a modicum of decency when it comes to what we consider for banning books, because I think that is a very extreme measure. I do think that what was said earlier is true, which is that removing access to the book or pulling it off the shelf and holding it in a different place is substantively no different than banning it. And so, to the extent that that two cents is worthwhile for you, as you consider what to do in this action, I appreciate you entertaining that perspective. I think that it's important that folks are exposed to a lot of different realities and different ways of being. I don't think, looking at that picture on that page, that it's really even credible that you would assume that it's leather. I mean, if it was, like I said, someone said earlier, if it was a woman's face on that, then you would be thinking that they're just wearing a tank top and tall boots. So again, the context is key. I don't think that there's anything that is required in terms of explaining something along those lines to a young kid when they're not ready to have that discussion. I think it's fully appropriate to have that discussion when they're older, and if you're a parent of that child, you know, that's what I would encourage. But I appreciate your time, appreciate Michelle Howard, all the work that you do on behalf of this library and the community, as well as the entire board. Appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Kelly Taylor. I live in Blair Township here in Traverse City, and I really appreciate all of you on the board. Thank you for your time. I know this isn't probably the easiest thing you've gotten to do in your time being on a board. Just as a mom, grandmother, and recently a great-grandmom for the first time, the daughter of two lesbians, the aunt of a trans person, and grandmother and aunt of several queer people. I would just like to say how important it is for those people to see themselves in the books in the library that they can see on the shelves without having to ask for a special book. If you have to ask for something that's behind the counter, there's shame attached. And I also want to say that being a parent is a creative endeavor, and we all find ways to explain things to our kids that we may not want to explain or might be uncomfortable. I have a biracial son, and I had to explain to him about why black people were treated the way they were in the history of our country, which I think is a little more difficult than explaining to somebody why someone's wearing a bikini bottom in a parade, where people generally tend to dress up. So I beg of you to please not allow any books to be censored or placed behind shelves. Thank you so much.
Who's next?
My name is Peter Bormuth. I am now a resident here in Traverse City. I maintain an office in Jackson, Michigan, and I'm a recent transfer. I just moved up here in the fall. And I've been using this wonderful library every day, and it is serving as my office up here when I'm not driving down to Jackson. And I noticed that there are a lot of people who come in with their children. This is one of the best libraries I've ever been in, and it is very child-friendly, and I'm very appreciative of that. And I noticed that they're all with their parents, and if their parents are there, their parents can exercise judgment if they want their children to take a book out or not. And I am a person who is an author. I wrote a children's book called Felicia and the Tree Frogs, and I had it banned from our library. And the book does not have anything sexual in it. It simply reflects an ecological fairy tale and criticism of the Christian religion on the basis of its relationship to the earth and to ecology. And in this case, once again, I see this Christian element that's so obsessed with sexuality, trying to eliminate the right of all the rest of us to free thought, free speech, and free choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Ellinger. I was a pastor for forty years, retired back in 2007 here in Traverse City at Central Church. And I'm very supportive of everything people have said, and the people who have said in support of not being, putting restrictions on what's in our library, and I appreciate the library standards that you folks have maintained. When this came up, and I got thinking about the book. As a pastor, I go around, when I was in ministry, visiting homes for all kinds of reasons, and frequently, right there in the living room, or the dining room, or the bedroom, would be a Bible, right there in the front where you could see it, kind of dusty. And I got to thinking, if people really read the Bible, they wouldn't put it in the front row of their bookcase at home. You can go into the Bible and find that there were wars with people slaughtering each other, there were kings who claimed they could do anything to anybody. Sounds familiar? And I got to thinking, if people really did read all the stories, or in the Bible, particularly the old Bible, a person gets thrown over the edge of the ship, and whale swallows him up and can't stand it, so he spits it out on the beach full of people trying to get a suntan. And if we really took seriously those kinds of stories, I think we would be challenged to read better and to teach our kids better. In the churches I've been in, it was common practice to give gifts of the Bible to third graders when they reached third grade level, with the assumption that parents are -- with the assumption that parents are going to sit down and teach their kids about the Bible. Well, if we can stand having the Bible in the head of our bookcase at home, we're not going to have any big squalls about this book or having to censor people who have the sense to make decisions about what they want to read and what they want to talk to their kids about. And I hope it continues. I appreciate all your work. I love this library, and I also am amazed at how fast I can get books from libraries in the area through your system. Thank you.
Thank you. There's still a couple of chairs up here in front. Anybody would like to come sit?
All right. Hello, my name is Iris Johnson. I live here in Traverse City. I don't really have any credentials to speak of that are notable, unlike the other people who've spoken here. I'm just kind of a person. And I didn't even know that I was going to speak until I got here and had a few thoughts. So apologies if this rambles slightly. There is a point. I'm a trans woman. I'm lesbian. I'm very queer. I'm also part of the kink community. I knew that I was trans when I was about four or five years old, when I watched an episode of Barney the Dinosaur. There's a cheerleader on it. I looked at her, and I was like, oh, wow, I want to be like her. And this was back in the days when, this is the 90s, so skirts are longer, there's no bare midriffs, none of that. It's nowhere near as sexualized as the world is today. And still, I thought of that. And I loved my library growing up in North Carolina. I grew up there. There's this gigantic library there. I'm sad to say it's bigger than this, but it was a giant city, so they have giant libraries. And I learned about everything that I could ever possibly want to there. I learned about tornadoes and how the power grid works and the human body, the digestive system, all sorts of things. And then life and circumstance took me away, and I lived in southern Spain for the majority of my life, where the local library was smaller than this room. And the only thing that I had access to as a kid or there is Tin Tin Comics. That was the only thing they had for kids there. None of these two things, these two different libraries, ever influenced how I grew up or the fact that I knew I was trans even before that or the fact that I got into kink or anything like that. They had nothing to do with that. Of all the ways I could discover things in the world, there are thousands. And if, as I understand it, this is about preventing kids from being led down a dangerous path, I'm sorry, there's a million paths. You could get rid of the entire library. I still became the woman I am today. And I had nothing in the world saying to me, yes, it's okay to be like this. Yes, there's all, all I heard while I was growing up is just, no, you're not allowed. You're a boy, can't do it. So the point I'm trying to make really is, if you're doing this because you want to prevent kids from becoming gay or trans or kinky or whatever, it's not going to work. It's not going to do anything. I'm sorry. It's, that's not how the way works. That's not how we find out about things. And so I thank you for your time and for indulging my rambling story, and have a good day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Right now?
No, okay, right here, better? My name is Susan Lemoine. I'm from Traverse City, and I support everything that's been said, I guess, except the first speaker. And I just wanted to add that when my kids were little, we had a pediatrician that we just loved, and friends of mine would go to him as well. And one Saturday night, I was out in town with my husband, and who did we see but Dr. R. And wearing leather, wearing, in full gear. And that was a surprise, but it didn't change our opinion of him or his wonderfulness as our pediatrician. And the other comment I had was, the reason I like to see some different things in children's books is if you live somewhere, you know, with not a lot of population or not a big city, you might say, like, when is the appropriate, do we want someone to be eighteen or twenty and seeing someone in full-out leather for the first time? Because then they're much more likely to say, that's weird, what's wrong with that person? I don't like that. But if they've been exposed to it at a younger age, they'll be like, well, you know, that's a leather person. So that's all I have to say, and thank you. This is, I'm new here, but this is a wonderful, wonderful library, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else to make a comment? Please come on up.
Hi, my name is Raven, and I am from Traverse City. And I just wanted, oh, I just wanted to say that I wasn't going to say anything originally, but I'm grateful for everybody that's come up here before me, because I feel like if there was a question or especially a main concern being that you don't know how to explain the image to your child, hopefully after everything that was said today, that you do now. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I might be a tad tall for the microphone. There we go, okay. I'm Lindsay Bolser. I live in Garfield Township. A lot of people know me as Zee or Mistress Zee. I run the Traverse Area Community Kinksters Group. So I wanted to touch on a couple of pieces that may not have been as discussed as the other.
Forgot to reset it. You're good.
Okay. A lot of things, such as, you know, the fact that what is shown in the book is more coverage than what was seen in the typical beach day. But also, from a kid's perspective, what was shown, the children might think that it's Goth or punk or something, because when you're three or four years old, you don't really know what the black color on the picture is. It could be anything. Doesn't necessarily mean leather. And also, that's what pride looks like. Sorry, I'm anxious. But as far as from the kink perspective, kink things, people start questioning that sort of thing fairly young, actually, potentially some of them. Like, for example, my partner, my fiancee, is kinky from a young age and asexual. So people tend to conflate the two as far as thinking that kink equals sex, and it really doesn't necessarily, it's a common Venn diagram overlap, but it's not necessarily equating to the other. Also, I've got stats as far as the fact that being with someone is actually a really common way for people to deal with things like trauma or in the river and sea, anything like that. And I don't know if you want me to go into the fallen stats of how common it is in the adult population, but also knowing that kids, growing up, getting through puberty and everything like that, sometimes find their way into it once they get, you know, eighteen, nineteen, et cetera. So, wow, I am much more anxious than I realized it was going to be, so I'm going to call this guy. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason. We have three generations of our family here today. So I'll be quick. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you. This library is an absolutely incredible place. My kids would be here every single day if they could, even if there's only ten minutes between when we drive by here from school and when swim practice starts. They want to go to the, stop by, go to the children's section to play or take out STEM kits or look at books. So thank you for all of your work in making this such an incredible place. This library and the books that we've taken out, both through the library and through Melcat, which is such an important resource, have just opened my children's eyes to so many new topics, and frankly, opened my eyes to so many new topics that I never had a chance to learn about as a kid, from anglerfish, which I didn't know about, but thanks to Sage's interest in the deep sea, I now do, to neurodiversity. We've taken out Grandad's Pride from the library and all really enjoyed reading it. I wanted to thank you for kind of exposing our family to such a broad range of ideas and experiences and images, and I'm so grateful for all of that. I'm so grateful for everyone who's come today to speak up about their own personal experiences and their own beliefs on the importance of free expression and shared ideas. And I think I, and also this theme, which I so much believe in, in trust in children and parents to be able to navigate things that are interesting and new and to sort of learn together. So I just wanted to thank everybody who's come out in support of keeping books on the shelves for my children.
Thank you. Anyone else? We don't have any other public speakers? Anyone without, oh, we have one more.
My name's Katie Bean Larson. I live in Union Township, and I've loved this library forever. I want, I kind of want to thank the woman who wanted the book put behind the counter for stimulating this discussion and giving me faith again in that parents and children can read and they can talk about everything they need to in an age-appropriate way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the floor to public content, comment, and turn it over to, any introduction from Michelle? Director Michelle.
So the basis of this request for reconsideration started in December when I received a letter from the woman who spoke first, basically saying exactly what she said. She was disturbed by one image in the book. She requested that it be put be, not banned, but put behind the youth desk. And so when someone actually fills out a form for a request for consideration, we have legal obligations, because people have a First Amendment right to the library and to consideration over what's in the library. So I met with Youth Services Manager Andy Shook and Assistant Director for Outreach Melissa McKenna, and we did our normal process. We read the book, we looked at the reviews, we saw how much it circulated, and we looked at our policies. And our policies are clear that we don't put books behind shelves. We don't put for content in the book, and it even says in our policy imagery. So I denied her request for reconsideration. I mailed her the letter, I emailed her the letter, and then that's when I received a response in return that she wanted to appeal the decision to the board. So that's how we got here today. Our attorney, Ann Cernick, is here, and she was recommending that we go into closed session. She has an attorney-client communication that she'd like to share with you, but it does require a vote of the board, a motion, and a vote of all five members. And I don't know if you want to say anything before we do that.
Yeah, it would require, you can hear me? It would require a roll call vote of two-thirds of the members who are appointed and serving. I understand as a sub-member board, that would be five people. So all five people present tonight would have to vote yes to go into closed session.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I have a question.
You have a question. We have to have a motion first, yeah?
So moved.
Okay, is there a motion to go into closed session in order to confer with counsel?
So moved.
I would make sure that the motion reads to discuss an attorney-client privileged communication, so could take a friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay. I'll make an amendment. Can I have an amendment? I'll support that we go into closed session to hear from our attorney and her counsel. Okay, I'm going to get a second.
Second.
And discussion?
I just had a question, and it's, if you have any indication as to how long this might take, so that all these people waiting might know how quickly we'll be back if they'd like to hear that.
And that was for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was looking at you, and you can't tell.
I, I don't know. I don't think it will take that long. It depends on how many questions you have about the opinion.
Okay. Any other questions? Considerable. Okay. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. And starting with Rogers?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
And Boiteen?
Yes.
So we're going to go into a closed session so that we can have a conference with the attorney. I'm not sure how long it's going to take, but we will be back.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to leave the room. We're going to go to the center.
You don't need to leave. We have another space set up so we can have a closed session. You're welcome to stay here. We would like to thank everyone for coming. We would like to thank everyone for coming.
Congratulations.
We're all in our places.
All right.
My Chinese place.
Can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
That's a move.
Second, support it. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to take the opportunity to have our legal counsel.
Shouldn't we vote on that motion?
Yes, please. Can we have a vote?
We have second. All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not opposed, motion carries.
I knew that was a motion.
Thank you. So now I'd like to take the opportunity to have our legal counsel explain some of the issues involved. Can?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity and if you can't hear me, let me know.
Did everybody hear?
Can everybody hear?
You can hear.
Okay. It's important for the board and the public to understand the rules, regulations, and laws that the library must follow when dealing with important issues such as decision to remove or move one or more books from the library's collection. Tonight, the library board will be addressing a request for reconsideration, but for the sake of these introductory remarks, the basis for the request to move the title to a restricted access area or behind a desk comes down to two main issues. First, the books contain images that the requister found objectionable and maybe other members of the community, so the basis for removal is a concern over the subject matter and content of the material. Second, the requister's concerned that the books are available to minors without parental supervision, so we wanted to address these concerns from a legal perspective. So why can't a library just move books behind the desk or to the adult section that some people find offensive? At the heart of the issue is the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. While the library can restrict access to material it deems illegal under Michigan or federal law, there's no basis to restrict constitutionally protected books solely because people disagree with the message or image. The court in Sun versus City of Wichita held that the removal of books from the children's area of the library violated federal and state constitutional rights to receive information, explaining that school-aged children possess First Amendment rights. The court also held that the right to receive information is vigorously enforced in the context of a public library. The court held that the burden on First Amendment rights by restricting access violates those First Amendment rights just as outright bans on expression, which would be banning materials from the library entirely do. Therefore, because the resolution in the Sun case restricted a child or an adult's ability to find material by placing it into the adult section, it violated the First Amendment. Similarly, another court struck down a school's policy that restricted students' access to certain books, such as Harry Potter books, in the library. They were required to have signed permission slips from their parents. The court found that the stigmatizing effect of having to have parental permission to check out books constitutes a restriction on access and violation of First Amendment. So what about protecting children from certain materials? I want to pause for a minute and make an important distinction. Many of the news stories and legal cases you hear about today involve decisions of school districts to remove books from school libraries. Schools have different roles and rules. Schools have the ability to act in place of the parent in locust parentis. Public libraries do not act in place of the parent, so there's not the same duty or relationship that a public library has to its patrons, even minor ones. The library's policy provides that the responsibility for reading material rests solely on parents and their legal guardians. Selection shall not be inhibited solely by the possibility that books may inadvertently come into the possession of a child. The library respects the parent's right to supervise their child's choice of reading. However, the library does not have the right to act in place of the parent. Therefore, a parent who chooses to restrict the material that the child selects must accompany those children when they use the collection to impose those restrictions. The United States Supreme Court recognized this when they were dealing with that case I mentioned before about removing a children's book to the adult section because people objected to the LGBTQ+ subject matter of the book. The US Supreme Court said if a parent wishes to prevent her child from reading a particular book, that parent can ensure to accompany the child to the library and should not prevent the children in the community from gaining access to constitutionally protected materials. Where First Amendment rights are concerned, those seeking to restrict access to information should be forced to take affirmative steps to shield themselves from unwanted materials. The onus should not be on the general public to overcome barriers to their access to fully protected information. For those same reasons, the library board may not remove books from the library or move them out of the children's section solely to protect unattended minors from accessing them. While we understand that there are people in this room who may find the book objectionable, there are other people in the room who would freely allow and encourage their child to access that same material. So what is the library board's role? The library will be called upon to balance the needs and desires of its patrons with its own legal obligations because all public officials must also swear an oath contained in the Michigan Constitution which begins as follows. "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state." What does it mean to support the Constitution? At times it's difficult. At times, supporting the Constitution means that we must listen to a community we do not agree with. At times, supporting the Constitution means we must tolerate ideas that there are books or movies out there that may conflict with our own personal morals or beliefs. Given this, the library board must ask itself three questions as you consider how to rule on this request. Are you applying your library's policies correctly? Are you following the state and federal laws in the U.S. Constitution? And are you following the mission, vision, and values of the library? If the answer is yes, you have no choice but to retain the book in question within the children's section. As a result, we recommend that the library board consider a resolution to deny the appeal which would mean that the book shall remain in the children's section of a library unrestricted. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution to deny the appeal of reconsideration requests regarding Granddad's Pride.
I support it.
How many? Can I hear? How many in favor?
We can do discussion.
We do discussion first.
Yeah, right. Just want to make sure that we're, everyone wanted to adopt that resolution, so.
Yeah, I think you just get a first and a second, and then you discuss.
Okay, very good. Discussion, please.
Yeah, I'm happy to go. I think it's clear on its face from a legal perspective and that to do anything but deny the appeal request would be in violation of the First Amendment and the Constitution. So that is a clear foundation. And that's how I'll be voting today. I also just want to share how deeply moved I am by the love in this room. You know, I heard that the person who requested the appeal, she talked about the love of her child. I'm a mom of six-year-old twins. I certainly understand that. And I know the, you know, funny reading that you can go through, like I'm reading Chronicles of Narnia right now with my kids. And I have had to skip over parts that talk about like child brides and beheadings because it's not age appropriate for them. I do that out of love. But the love I'm really holding on to today is the love that showed up in this room. Love for the library staff, many of whom identify as LGBTQ+, who had no say over whether they had to feel the impact of a request, whether it was intended or not. they had to feel the impact of a request that, whether it was intended or not, is an attempt to deny that full humanity of a whole group of people. And I just, I'm feeling immense gratitude that in this moment, in our country's history, the community could come together and express that type of love. So thank you and thank you all for waiting as we sat here for an hour to talk about, you know, some of the legal implications of this vote. I think that the message that I want to make sure that everyone here hears is that you are all welcome in this beautiful community with all of your beautiful colors.
Can I jump on your, I want to ride your wave there a little bit. I want to underline what Jennifer is saying and also just expresses that I take, take a point of privilege, I think, to express a personal way in which I see this, this conversation and this event this evening. The third point that the board is required to consider beyond the Constitution and the policies being consistent and whatnot are whether what we're doing is consistent with the mission, vision, and values of the library. The mission, vision, and values of a public library are manifest not just in the documentation and the procedures of the institution, but in the community that is served by a library. And to that extent, I want to suggest that what Jennifer's saying is exactly the point. I am, if we're looking for something to feel good about in these days that are very confusing and unsettling, this is one of those things we should feel good about. The care and consideration and I think the commitment of the person who brought this challenge to us should be celebrated. She came into a room where it was clear to her that she was probably not in the majority in terms of her opinion, but she at least felt safe enough to do it. That's a, that's a commitment, that's a, those kudos to you. Respect and consideration of what other people think is what this whole conversation is about. And we manifest that, that tonight in the way that everyone behaved. And in that, that sense, whether you call it love or you call it respect, you simply call it a loving community, it is what it was tonight, and I, I think it speaks well for it going forward. And going forward, this evening to me has represented what I hope I'm wrong about, but could be the first of many efforts to call into question the way in which we function as a civic and public institution and call into question whether or not we're serving the right people in the way we do this work. It is not lost on me that this is happening in temporal proximity to the expunging from official public documents and references in our nation's capital, records of the sacrifices made by human beings who are not white male. They gave blood, they gave treasure, they gave their lives in defense of this country. And the records of those contributions have been expunged allegedly because, you know, just in case, you know, there was something there that maybe overstated the value of diversity or inclusion. That justification is completely unacceptable, but it tells us a lot about where we are and how important it is for us to act in our local circumstances, to do the things that must be done to make sure that institutions like this survive, thrive, and foster the care and the love in our communities. We are told that it's what we are, what we're doing in Washington right now with respect to those records is something that may be a product of being too hasty, and we'll fix it, we'll bring it back. We're doing it just in case there's something problematic in the way we share and reflect and recognize and celebrate other Americans' contributions to our shared life. Just in case is simply beneath the dignity of a public library. We can't, we can't control what other people read just in case. We might not like who reads it, or we might not like what it says. So I, I vote tonight in favor of this motion because, first of all, it's our legal duty to do so, but that's not why I'm doing it. I'm doing it because it's the morally correct action to take, because it expresses, as I read it, the will and the love in this room and in this community. So kudos to all of you and to the person who was willing to come forward and speak.
Susan?
I don't know that I have something so professorial as my colleague here.
You mean wordy.
I've taught human sexuality in this community for almost 40 years at every level, and I too really compliment the patron that came forward with this issue because in my mind, she showed us the process works. And I know that those of you that came tonight had to do a variety of things to be here, and I deeply respect that. And for those of you that spoke, I really appreciate that. We got over 100 email letters. I appreciate the folks that did that. A lot of people forget, we've got a whole group of people that are watching at home right now, the whole live library meeting, and for a variety of other reasons, people will catch up with us through the, the other media or watch the broadcast later. You can imagine my reaction in some of the letters when people said, "Well, just put the book out of reach." Every day in this community, as a disability activist, I am constantly looking at ableism and trying to get people to understand separate is not equal. You can't have a book just physically out of reach of someone and ask, to ask the library to get it because of privacy issues. The other thing I want to say is that for the patron that brought the issue forward, the library and our wonderful staff are exactly the people to ask, "How do I talk about this to my child?" And I received a fair amount of letters from people that said, "When I read that book," and there were people who went to Horizon Books looking for it, and because it's an independent publisher, they only order it by order, so the person was really glad to come to the library to get the book. When they showed it to their circle of small children, the children said, "Oh, the, the grandpas are wearing their summer motorcycle gear and they're so excited to see each other." So we have a whole area of interpretation of images that could vary by everyone, and we heard a lot of that tonight, by everyone in this room. I will be voting for the motion, and as many of my colleagues will tell you tonight, it is backing of the Constitution, but even if those weren't our guidelines, I, I would be leading the charge with many of the others. Thank you.
I don't have a lot to say, which I know is surprising to some people in the room, but it only comes, for me, it only comes down to one question. What does my oath to the board say? And my oath to the board says, "I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Michigan, and thus I will vote to accept this, to deny this appeal of reconsideration because the Constitution tells me we must." Thank you.
I want to thank the petitioner for a thoughtful and respectful response that was based on love of family and community. I want to thank all the members of the community who shared their opinions on the issue of taking Grandad's Pride off the shelf. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, of the press, or the right of the people basically to assemble and to petition the government for a regress of grievances." The Constitution is a wonderful gift we've inherited. We must not let its intentions die through intimidation or lack of exercise. Thank you. So now we can take a roll call vote on adopting the resolution to deny the appeal regarding Grandad's Pride.
Starting with Rogers?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
And Boite?
Yes.
Now we're going to get on to the stuff that you may not be interested in.
But we expect that you'll stay and help us.
Are there any items anyone wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. Now I'll make a motion to accept the content of the consent agenda.
So moved?
Support it. Have a vote.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, director's report.
I have nothing to add to my report. I just want to personally thank you all for supporting the staff who love this library and love our community, and knowing that you support them means the world.
Old business, employee handbook revision. Can I have a motion to accept the modifications to the employee handbook for clarifications and to satisfy requirements of the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act?
I would like to make that motion.
Do I have to repeat? Support? Support.
I also want to ask a question.
Okay. All who are in favor?
All right. Wait, he has to talk about it first.
We have to talk.
Discussion, okay, discussion.
I want to ask a question. Just a clarification.
Yeah.
I believe that it's explicitly said, but just to be sure and on the record, the changes that are embodied in that, in the new handbook have been reviewed by legal counsel.
Yep, Lindsey Raymond.
So we're all, we're all good.
Yep.
That's all.
Can this require a roll call vote?
Okay. Starting with Rogers?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Boite?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is passed. Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of, no, sorry.
What department?
Amendment, can I have a motion to accept amendments to the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local 214 to ensure compliance with the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act?
I would like to make that motion.
Second?
Okay, discussion.
I just had a question. That have, has the library executive staff met with the representatives from Teamsters to this?
Yes, yes. Right, they voted yes. Excellent. Yeah. Yeah, they're all.
Any more discussion? No? If not, then I'll call for a roll call vote.
Okay. Starting with Rogers?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Boite? Yes.
Can I have a motion to allow the closure of the Kingsley Branch Library from March 23rd through April 4th to facilitate carpet installation?
So moved?
Support.
Discussion?
What color?
Amy, no.
Color's a positive thinking.
I like to see that color wheel.
It's jewel tones, brown tan background. You're gonna love it.
Can we have a roll call vote, please? Do we need it? No, we don't. All who are in favor?
Aye.
All who are opposed? Okay, the motion passed. New business. Can I have a motion to allow Howard to exceed your $25,000 spending limit with one call services for snow and lawn services for the remainder of 2025?
I'd like to make that motion.
Oh, please let me. Please.
Okay, go ahead.
Snow removal in me here.
Give me a second. I'll support that.
All right.
Discussion? Does anyone want to know why it's exceeded $25,000 or is it not?
It's pretty obvious.
Okay, we had a very snowy winter. Snowy winter. Okay, this will recall, require a roll call vote because it involves money.
Starting with Rogers?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Boite? Yes.
Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of the new security gates at the main library with funds from the Public Improvement Fund for not to exceed the amount of $29,000?
So moved?
Support.
Discussion?
I hope they're armored gates.
If that concludes discussion, we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Rogers?
Yes.
Vickery?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
And Boite? Yes.
I just think they should have been replaced before this meeting.
Okay, final new business item is one that we amended on the, into the agenda, and that is to, can I have a motion to send a letter in your packet regarding the consequences of the March 14th executive order to eliminate the Institute for Museum and Library Services to Congressman Jack Bergman, Senator Gary Peters, and Senator Alisa Slotkin?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support that motion.
Discussion?
Should we encourage other people to send their own letters as well?
Yes. Yes, let's encourage others to send to their congressmen and senators that we are losing resources we very much depend on, particularly for Melcat, which is the interlibrary loan service that many people take advantage of, for the training that our staff receives, for the visually impaired services that we are able to offer our patrons. There are a raft of things, so I would very much encourage anyone who's here and who you can communicate with that, that reauthorization that was done in 2018 was voted on in the affirmative by our congressman. It was signed by President Trump at the time, and so we have every reason to ask why, what changed between 2018 and now that we're no longer worthy of receiving those funds. Is that what you want? Yes, please.
Oh, I was also going to ask Michelle if there's a place in our line where the impacts of this decision could be readily accessible by the public so they could see what would make, like for me, when I was reading your amazing memo about it, you know, the summer reading program really stood out, that programming for all of the summer reading programs in the area that my kids rely on all summer long are impacted by this funding cut. And there's a laundry list, as, as was previously noted, so it would be wonderful if it's not already there, it may, you, you think of everything.
Well, it was actually Heather Brady. It's a blog post and it's right on our thing, and if, if you need the address, I think it's title.org/IMLSfunding, and it has all the talking points on there and a place where you can click to get to your congressman or senator.
Excellent.
Right on the library page.
The copy that we had in the packet is addressed to your elected official, and you said Bergman. Is this going to more than one person?
Yeah, I didn't do the formal address, like with all the stuff, but that's the basics of the letter. If you guys all approve it, I'll just sign title board with your names.
And then one, one other question, the dollar, the $26 ROI on a $1 expenditure, is that expanded and explained someplace in our, in our, on our website?
It's, well, we have like a library value calculator on our website, so you can put in what you've checked out and it'll give you the value, but I can expand on that.
Well, if we were asking people to manwagon this and share their own individual perspectives on, on the on the renewal, the more information we can give them, the better. I don't know that I'm asking you to do that, but is there a way to access the underlying data, not just the claim?
Yeah, I think basically what they do is, like, for libraries like us, when we did the calculator for the village, it's like you calculate how many items circulate and the value of those various items divided by how many people check things out, and that's how you get the value. Or, you know, so you get, like, a value per person, or we know how much we get in taxes, so then we know how much we circulated in value, and then we know how much we get, and that's how that number can come up with. So I think that number was published by either the Library of Michigan or the ALA, and I'll make sure to cite that, so people can look for more information if they're needed.
Any more discussion?
No. Does it need to be... Does this need to be read into the record? Are we just voting on the document? No? I don't know. I'm just asking.
What do you want to do? It's up to you.
Happy to have it in the record. Go ahead.
Put it in.
Okay.
Was that a motion to...
We still have to finish this motion.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if we had it yet.
Okay. So all those in favor of sending this board response letter? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? The motion passes. Okay. Did you want to have this read down? No. Okay, great. Next item of business is the public comment period. Just like before, if you have comments, please come to the podium.
Hi, Amy Monette, Kingsley Branch Library Branch Manager. Thank you for voting to close our library for those two weeks. Really appreciate it. If you'd like to, March 24th through March 29th, anytime between 9:00 and 5:00, you're welcome to come help me move some shelves, box up some books. And I just want to put out a thank you to the Kingsley community for coming in and checking out. We had a challenge where if they checked out 100 books, they got to slip into our drawing for a family pizza party, and families turned out. I think one family took home 500 books, which are 500 books I don't have to move. Thank you. Thank you to Kingsley, and please join us, or if you just want to come hang out, you're welcome to come do that, too. It'll be fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Wiggins. I'm one of the new stewards with the union here, and I just wanted to say thank you for passing, if you couldn't tell with my applause in the back, for approving the awesome opportunity that Michelle is offering us. Sorry, Melissa's my boss that I... My director port that I've been talking with all day. Yeah, just wanted to say thank you and introduce myself. I'm usually found at the second-floor reference desk. If you have any questions, I'm happy to run and find a book for you or look something up for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, looks like we have no more comments. Trustee comments? Anyone? It's all considered. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Cindy Shapiro, Thompsonville and Benzy County, which I forgot to say earlier. What does it take to request a second copy of a book that's become very popular, namely Grandpa's Pride?
I'll order it.
Any other trustee comments? I would just make one comment, is that beyond trying to remove copies from the shelves, you also have the opportunity to add information to the shelves. It's possible to make a request, add something that you think is of value, and I think that's equally important to challenging. So if there are no other trustee comments, I will take a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Support it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
You've got some signing.
I do. Vicki, you have?
Oh, yes. Do you have a super?
Vicki, you're not in the...